Since I called the order of the last meeting, I'll call this one to order at 6:00 PM. Today's date, Steve, July 18th?
July 18th, yep.
July 18th, the second meeting of the 48 subcommittee of the town council. The three members are present. We've got Council Dombrowski on Zoom. We've got Samantha Elliott, Senior Planner on Zoom. We've got Steve Mayo is present, Bob Vincent is present. And in the room here, we have Jen McDonald. And we have
unnamed guests, no. Marlene Feldwisch, I live in Wakefield.
Marlene Feldwisch, who is a member of the public, participated. Possibly participating later. So the attendance is good, public engagement. Do you wish to engage?
Yeah.
At this point?
I just wish to listen and be present.
We do have a few people online.
Yep. Let's see if you see any hands, Steve. I can't see them from here.
Everyone has their camera off, so we won't see their hands. But if they put their cameras on.
Do you have to have your camera on to put up your hand?
No, but I can see it up there. I can see it here.
Okay.
I'm gonna take it then that no one at this point wishes to engage.
Sure, if, if, you know, we can always take a little more out of order later if, if need be. Council organization, I actually, I think there's been kind of an assumption that I'm Chair of this subcommittee, fellow counselors, but I don't think I necessarily am. So Counselor Vincent, I think had mentioned a procedural aspect that perhaps we should formally have a chair, which leads me to ask a question of Counselor Dombrowski. And this is in the category of if nominated, would I serve? If someone is to make a motion that you be Chair, would you be interested in serving?
I would be fine with either of you serving in that capacity. And I would strongly support either of you.
That being said, we have a motion, Counselor Vincent.
I move to have Counselor Vincent serve as Chair of this subcommittee.
That one might not get seconded because he's pretty busy.
Okay, I'll, I move for Chairman McLean to be Chair of this subcommittee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
And I, my marketing suggestion for next time.
I have none on my end.
Okay, seeing none, roll call vote. Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
I'll make it three zero for the record, Samantha. And I guess I am Chair. Well, I am Chair at this point.
Congratulations.
Must we have a Vice Chair?
I would, just in case. Just in cases.
It's a wise idea. Do I have a motion on Vice Chair?
I, I don't feel strongly either way. Counselor Vincent, are you good with serving as Vice Chair?
This is hard for me because I'm really interested in being appointed to the Housing Production Plan and offering to serve as Chair or Vice Chair of that. But I don't know if I'm gonna be appointed because that's gonna be the next town council meeting.
I move that Counselor Dombrowski be Vice Chair of this subcommittee.
Second.
Any discussion? A non-roll call vote, Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
And I'm also yes, so that's also three zero, Samantha, for the record. Next item, potential grants at risk for non-compliance. Do we have an update on that?
I can, I can give a quick update on that.
Sure, and, and I think, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the number we had was as solid as possible.
So the town of Wakefield over the last you know, few years, received what we're considering three, 3.7 million dollars in grants. And Chapter 48, Section 3A in their regs do list a number of grants that would be, I'm gonna use the word compromised, that's my word, compromised, for non-compliance, and they are mainly in the housing area. They, they promulgated these in the regs and then I think on the, in the statute. And then in the regs, they, the regulations, they push them out a little bit further, so non-compliance will be taken into consideration when making grant award recommendations from, for community planning, which is from the EOHLC. Downtown Initiative, Downtown Initiatives, EOHED, Urban Agenda, EOED. Rural and Small Town Development Funds, EOED. Brownfield redevelopment, mass development, site readiness, mass development. Underutilized Properties Program, mass development. Collaborative Workspace Programs, mass development. Real Estate Services Technical Assistance, mass development. Commonwealth Place Programs Assistance, mass development. Commonwealth Places Programs, mass development. Land Use Planning Grants from the EOEEA. Land Acquisitions of Natural Diversity Land Grants, EOEEA. And Municipal Vulnerable Preparedness, MVP, Planning and Project Grants, again, from the EOEEA. They also, and then they have this catchall, then this "they" is the regulations that the state came out with. Determinations of compliance also may inform other funding decisions by EOED, EOHLC, the MBTA, and other state agencies which consider local housing policies when evaluating applications for discretionary grant programs or making other discretionary funding decisions. So as I boil all that down, I would say of that 3.7 million that we did receive, two, about 300,000, 400,000 of it was mass DOT grants, which are not on the list. However, I, I'm not real comfortable to think that they wouldn't be included as a later date. We do have a million dollar grant in at Mass Development for the, on the Underutilized Properties Program, which is for the Albion Cultural Exchange to add an elevator, we've talked about that. That could be compromised. I think it is also important to note that any earmarks that we get in the state budget are some things that we lobby our state senator and representatives for, those to me are not subject to this because they're gonna be passed by the legislature, not by government agencies. So for instance, we got, you know, money for the bandstand repair. That was a state earmark. That to me would not be at risk. The Veterans Heritage Grant of 15,000 dollars that I think we got for the Soldiers and Sailors Act, that to me would not be at risk. That's listed, however you don't know. The Light Department also has, you know, about 1.5 million that they've talked about. Attorney Mullen has looked at where these have come from. Mass DOP, Department of Transportation, Department of Energy. And again, I think Tom Mullen has also opined on those and said, they are probably not at risk, but you know what? It, we do that with the caveat that the state can look at other grants. And maybe they look at Wakefield with a jaundiced eye in other grants that are discretionary. So I can't say, I can say some that certainly fall under. I can say that others that do not fall under. For instance, the money we have for the Housing Production Plan, to do the plan on that. That certainly is something that could be looked at and maybe not granted to us if we didn't pass. So that's kind of where I am right now, and we apply for a lot of grants. I think the cybersecurity grant, as I said Monday night, this Monday night, would probably be okay because I think it's coming from a different area, but we don't know. Yep, and so sorry to be wishy-washy, I know the Chair hates that, but.
With something like a mass
Mass Cultural Council.
I don't think Mass Cultural Council is not listed here. But, but you don't know.
We get 25,000 a year.
But you don't know.
These are really
They're not large, but
Yeah.
The items that are specified are housing related, things like housing choice. We have gotten some grants through housing choice. We know that some of those would be subject to risk.
Right.
But I also had been following up and, and had been mentioning that two of our last town council meetings, that, that number for gas and light of 1.5 million was also raised. I was at their meeting by cellphone in Zoom last night and I thought I was just going to observe, but they actually started making, you know, asking me to talk about it, and I simply said, I, I wanted them to talk to their council and their council, Mr. McCarthy, to talk to town council, Tom Mullen, so that we would have an idea of whether this 1.5, which basically I think was brought to our meeting initially as, as being a given that it would be at risk. You know, would it actually be at risk? And I immediately asked Tom Mullen for an opinion. I, I think as town administrators indicated, that money is probably not at risk. I think we all have to just keep in mind, as town administrator says, you know, the Attorney General could try to get more aggressive and, and expand things. But when we go out to the public on this iteration of 48, I simply want us to have the best facts that we have so that we can be transparent. And in, in regard to that, one of the, the 3.7 million was last, the last cycle was mentioned as being over three years. I did ask whether, what the number was for five years, and it was also 3.7 million. I only make the point to say that, you know, maybe we lose a million a year, maybe we lose 800,000 a year. The main point is we're gonna lose something if we don't comply. And, and I'm just trying to, you know, get the best, most accurate number. I think the gas and light 1.5 million was, is, is not at risk like the ones that we know are enumerated and, and the Attorney General has already started taking some action on with communities like Milton.
And, and I will say that, you know, in my mind, you know, when you do apply for a grant, I mean, you, we put our best foot forward. We talk about a lot of things that we do, no matter what it's for. And I, but I, I do, what would concern me is that with non-compliance, I think part of that rubric may be, you know, there may be points taken off or what have you. So I think we just have to bear that in mind for non, you know, items that aren't specific. And, you know, but I think we'll find out. As will
Just one other thing I might say on that is, we, we have seen, I think it was in '23, they had expanded the grants that had to fall under 48. So they, they made it, you know, they made it more of a penalty to not be compliant, obviously. But I think it's also important for us to convey to the residents that this is also something that if, if it doesn't, if, if it doesn't go, if it doesn't get approved in November, we can also see what happened after the first of the year. And then if we find that there are a lot of other grants that, that could be affected by it, it could also be revisited potentially. You know, I'm not saying that that's the preferred approach, but it's not like come January 1, suddenly, you know, there's going to be, you know, financial devastation for the town either. I think we need to be mindful of that and think about, you know, the fact that, okay, well, the fallback would be, we'd have to then monitor and see what grants are affected and be able to measure. But I, I, I do hate the idea of, of losing any grant money, certainly. But I, I think we should also be mindful that it's not a cliff, you know, come, you know, January 1 of, of '25.
Counselor
I would just add that we became a housing choice designated community a year and a half ago and worked very hard to get that designation. It would be unfortunate if we were to lose that, those grant opportunities, given the progress that we made in housing that got us that designation. Also, the Housing Production Plan grant would also potentially be at risk.
Then that really was through the housing choice community.
Yes, that's right. That's part of that with the housing choice community. And that's part of the degree of control that we want to have over housing and having a an approved and hopefully down the road certified housing production plan is imperative to give us control over housing. And it would hate to see us lose that grant money because that's one of the most important projects, in my opinion, that the town is gonna be putting together over the next year. Thank you.
That's the update on item six, or item five, the potential grants at risk, at least for tonight. Everything's in ongoing. A lot of moving parts as we go forward.
I will say this, one thing, I broke this down, I forgot to say it anyway. The state is hiring personnel to kind of monitor MBTA communities and I, then where communities are. And I think that that, part of that will be probably letting the other departments know where they are in the, for grants. So state is kind of adding somewhat more scrutiny on that level. We do know about that. So that's why I say we don't know.
And Steve, just, just on that, since '23, when they added that additional category, there haven't been any other grants or categories of grants that have been included on the 48 requirement, right?
No, that's the latest list that I have, yes, that hasn't changed.
But I, I mean, I, I do expect that, that list will probably expand over time, so I think we obviously have to be mindful of that. But I, just, so '23 would have been the last amended to that then?
Yeah, August 17th of '23 was the last time.
Right, okay, thank you.
If we've pretty much covered the current status of what we think is at risk relative to grants, I would move to item six, reviewing a draft of survey. Would you like to pick that one up, Steve or?
I think Sam, Sam, are you able to share your screen? Do you want to share your screen? Do you want to unmute first?
Yeah, no, I'm unmuted. I can pull it, so do you want me to share the version that you're reviewing, or do you want the updated one that has the graphics in it?
I think the updated one. If you can do that. Now let me see if I can.
Yeah, hold on, I'm just letting it load. Trying to see if it will load. See if I can get.
You should be able to share it now. Look at that.
Okay, can you, okay. So I, I added the background information, which we don't need to read right now. And you can get into that later. It's mostly just pulling stuff from the website. But the actual contents of the survey, I, like I had mentioned in the draft that y'all had received, that there would be a number of graphics and photos that are added. So what I went through is I added some definitions for garden apartment versus mid-rise versus mixed use, in case for some reason someone doesn't know. And if there's anything else that you can think of that really needs to be called out specifically, let me know, I will add it. So what I did is I actually walked around Wakefield on one of the really hot days and took a bunch of pictures of various different types there. And of various types of buildings that meet these different criteria. I actually tried to scale them so that they're relatively comparable to each other. I'm gonna try to see if I can maybe put them all together so you could visually see them in a row. But I added garden apartment buildings, there's, excuse me, there's a couple on Richardson Ave, not Richardson Street, which is a different area. Most people know what mixed use is, but there's one of the three-story kind of smaller mixed use. I think there's mostly three stories and one or two four-story buildings on Albion and Main, right there in our kind of downtown. There's a mid-rise apartment building over at the corner of Foster and Richardson. And that's what's in this example right here. And then, of course, the Tonau Building is also a mid-rise building and meets those criteria per the zoning code definition. So then you can continue down. The first question is if you are actually supportive of the town being in compliance. It does note that there would be parameters chosen by the residents, looking at various areas, number of parking spaces, even design guidelines, et cetera. And then from there, talking about, are you aware that non-compliance could result in loss of grant monies? The, I believe one of the questions you had actually emailed me, Mr. McLean, was that the maps weren't included, and you were asking how people would toggle those. Hold on for just a moment, I don't want them to scream. Sorry, I am by myself watching both, because my wife had to go to town last minute. So anyway, back to this. So the different maps, I did, I have the half a mile radius around each of the stations. So you have Wakefield Station, green wood, and then Melrose Highland. And they're in order, the maps almost line up. And then there are three other offsite locations that could potentially be considered. There's Salem Street, the area that's highlighted, I noted that it's 31 acres in that particular highlighted area. We can only go up to nine. It is limited per the way MBTA communities is written. We have, we can go up to 25%. So since our number is at 36, and this is again going off of minimum compliance, just so you know. If the number's at 36, then that would be nine, so you could do up to nine acres. And all of these are over, so they would not be the size that's on here, it's just areas to start looking at. The way that these can be set up is through little checks and buttons and boxes and things, so you could select more than one really easily in a survey, and they could be circled. There's, I wrote it first that you would have marked the areas you don't want to see something, but if that feels confusing to any of you, or you didn't realize that, I'm happy to change it back to mark the areas you do want to see something. Either is fine. Then we can go on down. I think the other questions that you had brought up, Mr. McLean, were all clarified through those graphics in the maps. If there's anything else that's outstanding, let me know. But we're, the goal is to try to see what we could do to get close to that minimum compliance number and kind of glean from the survey itself, very specifically what different areas you, the town people, the Royal U, want to look at through this iteration of MBTA communities. So then for the last one, you had asked 14, how do you, is there a way to rank them? And yes, there'll be a way to, to shuffle them around through the survey. And then for the paper copies, I'll have a line out to the side and you just would rank one through. I don't know, however many are there, L is, I think, the 14, 15, 15. Anyway, and then there are demographics questions, if you'd like to know those, so that you have a general idea of the audience populace that's responding to the survey. If you want me to add those, let me know. I, I just didn't type them in because I wanted some clarification before adding them. Did you, I can go through more of it in detail, but in the effort of trying to be respectful of your time, since you had you, let me know if you have any specific questions about it.
So a little bit for the people at home is that, under the MBTA community's law, 75% of the area needs to be around, within a half a mile of the train stations. So we have a Wakefield stop, Wake North Ave. We have a Greenwood Station stop. And we have Melrose Highlands, which actually, some of Wakefield is within that half a mile from that station. So 25% could be anywhere else in town. So people could have other thoughts too. The reason why we, we went that way is that a lot of people said, how come it's all over here? So really, the, the law did give a little bit of wiggle room there. And I think if you went down Audubon Road, would be, wouldn't be too many people that would have an issue. Personally, I think.
No, I, I think Audubon as one of the potential outside of the circle zones, to me anyway, makes, makes some sense. We'll see what the, what the surveys and what the public think about those different areas. Samantha, there's one thing that I think that I had a concern about, that the graphics don't necessarily explain. And that is, I think I had talked about parentheticals. For example, if we're doing two to four units, or three, three to four units, we are probably doing them in the residential areas, or the, at least the GR, as was proposed by the working group last time. Whereas if we're talking about a four to, possibly a four to five story, you know, resident, you know, residential building, whether it's mixed use or pure residential, that would probably be in commercial area, something like, or in our special permit district, someplace like Foundry Street. And, and I think I thought we might be able to get a little clarification on that in the questions themselves, so that people would, you know, understand where, where are these particular things going to go? Or likely to go. Does that make any sense to you?
So after talking with the state, with MHP, who provides technical assistance through the state's, they administer the state's grants. And then talking with our consultant, who has worked with other municipalities around the area, on MBTA communities specifically, there is the potential of doing something called character areas. So you would have in a commercial area some sort of height, or in the industrial area, like around Foundry Street, you would have a much taller building. So we could break those out. I can, I can do one of two things, either I can ask everybody if they want that, to have a mix of all of these through different character areas. I thought it was worded in that way, maybe the iteration that got out is slightly different than the first one I went through. Or I can just kind of spell it out as part of the instructions, slash background info, to give the information that we're looking at trying to offer kind of a tiered approach, or that there's the potential of a tiered approach. It just, you have to let me know which direction you'd rather go.
Do you have anything, Counselor Vincent, on the questions?
Questions? Yeah, if I could, thanks. Thank you for doing this, Sam. This is excellent work. Can you go to question number two? Should we say current or future, and/or future grant monies from the state? Because we possibly could lose some of the current grant money that we've received.
Trying to figure out how to get, yeah, I, I
It says, are you aware that non-compliance could result in the loss of the town receiving future grant monies from the state?
Right, I'm just trying to get back to it. The screen sharing has blocked my entire ability to like control the top of my screen. Okay, so which one are you, you're saying?
Number two. We're doing it.
Okay. Are you aware that non-compliance could result in the town, the loss of the town receiving future grant monies? What did you want me to change it to?
I was wondering if you could add current and/or future grant monies. Because there are some current grants that we've received, according to Mr. Mayo, for instance, the Housing Production Plan, that we could potentially lose with non-compliance. Is that right, Steve? Yeah, it's potential, yeah.
Yeah, there's even potential for the, some of the grants that have been awarded, or that are reimbursement grants. We don't have a definitive answer, I think at this point, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, whether or not those would be something that could be impacted as well.
Right, so if we could add
Non-compliance.
So putting current or future does? After the word received, and putting current or future. The other question I had is, you know, number four?
Actually, can we just say with two for a second, Bob?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I think we may need to just identify that, it's certain categories of grants, like you, you know, so it's not, so it's, it is state grants, but it's certain categories of grants.
Okay, the, so there was discussion about
Like receiving certain current or future grant monies.
Okay.
Yeah, certain current or future grant monies.
Like the town receiving certain current or future grant monies.
Okay. Okay, and anything else on number two?
I have a comment. Like it? Um, there are other
Excuse me, please pause, please let me know your name before you're speaking, because I can't see.
Yeah, I was just announcing myself. It's Jen, Sam, and Ed.
Sorry, very tiny.
I, there are more penalties than just the loss of grant funding. And I don't know if that's something people want to know. And the Attorney General said MBTA communities cannot avoid their obligations under the law by foregoing this funding. So there are other penalties. I don't know if that matters to people.
We could end it, and number two perhaps by saying monies to the state and potential litigation.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's good.
And Bob, I know you had mentioned three, or four was the next, but I just have a quick question on three.
Yeah, I do too, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you go, I, I skipped one. Yeah, you go. I, I skipped when I said four. I meant three. You, you go ahead and start it.
I just wanted to, um, I, I know that we've talked a lot about the idea of um, Foundry being one consideration. And um, I think these are great. These maps are great. The one thing that I think is not as clear to me is. Foundry specifically and how we could potentially be a bit foundry heavy um, in this. Um, and it, I, I realize that's a part of Wakefield Station, but I, I think if it was somehow identified as a standalone, it might. Help people to better contextualize what we're talking about.
I, I'll just say to that comment, uh, counselor that, you know, I had asked in the past whether Foundry could be a possibility. It wasn't really considered in the last iteration.
Right.
I had been told that it, we could potentially have as many as four hundred units on Foundry. And there is apparently an area that we wouldn't use that's closer to Crystal Lake. But call it the middle of the street or whatever is left, we could create a, you know, a district in there that I was told could. Provide four hundred units now. Four hundred units, you know, that, that's a lot of units, but then again, with our current special permit district. It's very likely that those units are going to be developed one way or the other. This would simply be an mechanism where I, we would offer two possibilities. One might be a ten percent, uh, if it's, if it's a big enough building as opposed to a two family or a three family or a four family. Where we could get the ten percent affordable in there. Uh, they're currently required to do eighteen percent. There may be various reasons why a builder might want to go with the ZBA special permit at the eighteen percent. They might also decide to go, uh, you know, with a forty eight, ten percent. Um, but I've, I've always thought if we could do four hundred units on Foundry Street where we're pretty sure development is going to happen anyway. Why wouldn't we?
And has.
Yeah. I, I, I know you, yeah, and, and Chairman McLean, you've said that a number of times. That's what, that's really struck me, you know, with that. So I think if you look at the, so Wakefield Station, it just presents to me as, as very much the West Side discussion that was part of the last town meeting. Whereas I think, um, if we're somehow able to identify Foundry as another of these options. I think that people may have more of an appetite for that. I don't know, but to your point, I think it's going to be developed regardless. Did to the same scale. So why would we, you know, not at least consider that?
So maybe, can I jump in? Maybe we can put a second. Wake, uh, under Wakefield Station, have Wakefield Station proper or Wakefield Station two and a half, uh, half mile radius. And then Wakefield Station, maybe include Foundry Albion, kind of that circle in there. Does that make sense? Okay. Sam, that makes sense to you?
Yep, yep, I can, so similar to how I did Salem Street. Uh, and all those other called out, I can do another one for Foundry specifically. And again, referring back to talking about the kind of uh, character areas. That could be industrial or high density or whatever it is that you want to call it, uh, and would allow for a higher density than elsewhere. And could note as such, I can note that over off to the, I don't know, one of the sides on, on the little table that I created. If that is something, if that's what you're getting at, I just want to make sure it's explicitly that we're explaining that some.
I, I think that's what I'm getting at. I think it's what.
Yeah.
What all three counselors are getting at and what town administrator is getting at, uh, to set that out as a separate. Um, I might take it a step further if we have the ability to do the mapping. And wonder whether, you know, we could put out another potential area, possibly right across from. Wakefield Station, you know, going down north. Whether that be something for, uh, maybe there for, for um, or possibly for uh. You know, uh, combination of uh, first floor uh, shops. You know, the, the mixed use type of study. I don't know whether that's something we could put out as a separate item at this point when we. Did we just get our consultant? We have a consultant on board?
I had a meeting with them one or two days ago. I can't remember exactly. And went over a number of different things, trying to talk about maps and com- and compliance, how much time they need. And some different areas that we were starting to look at. One thing to keep in mind, any area that you choose to do mandatory mixed use. Will not count for the acreage. So you will, if you do mandatory mixed use, like across the street from the train station. You'll be able to count those units. Let's say it's, I don't know, fifty units. I'm just throwing a number out there. This is not accurate. This is just for an example. If there is the potential to do fifty units across the street from the train station along North Ave, if you take that. If you take that area and you make it mandatory mixed use, it will not count for the acreage. The overall thirty six number that we have to hit. So you'll end up with, let's say if it's an, I don't know, might, that might not even be, but an acre, acre and a half. Um, but instead of hitting thirty six, then you'd hit thirty seven or thirty eight or whatever larger number. So just do something to keep in mind. It's not necessarily, um. It's, you can always allow it, but in areas where you require it, the acreage doesn't count, but the units do. I know that sounds confusing.
I, I think that's, you know, that's a good point. You know, when we say minimum, are we talking about minimum acreage? If we, if we hit thirty six acres, we are way below what the last iteration was, whether it was Plan A, Plan B or Plan C. So the question then becomes, you know, to do some specific mixed use, let's say it added five acres overall. You know, the units would still count. Maybe we still go with the minimum unit count, but we're slightly over the thirty six acres. Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't think, that doesn't give me serious heartburn if we think. That it's, it's a good idea to have some areas that are required mixed use because. Historically, they've had shops on the street, you know, as opposed to Foundry, which is now, let's face it. Virtually one hundred percent uh, residents only. I just, I just toss it out there as, you know, it, it seems to me a little bit before we get the maps, a little bit. Card before the horse to be doing the survey in a sense because it's better if people have the graphics and, and can see. Instead of one big circle, what the particular menu items might be. I'm not saying I want to hold up the survey, but I do see that as being. A bit of an issue. What do you think, uh, Counselor Vincent?
Yeah, I, I see your point. We're only doing one survey, right?
Yeah, I have enough time.
Yeah, there, there's also the time factor. So it's better to get public feedback, but I, like it to be the best quality, the. Public feedback that we can get, um.
Well, at least adding the subsection of Foundry Street under Wakefield Station helps that to a certain extent.
Yeah, yeah, we could maybe tweak something later. So why don't we stick with the Foundry Street for now?
Uh, I might just add that, you know, I, I really like, I do like your idea about North Ave too, because at least we get, we're able to kind of get us um. Take the pulse of residents. So I, even if it's not necessarily North Ave isn't the solve. It could be part of like something else we put together. So I think the more optionality we create here in the survey. We can at least get, you know, a sense of where the app, where the community appetite is for these various aspects. And then we can always kind of fit the, the pieces together, you know, to be in compliance. We, we develop a plan that obviously reflects that. But um, I do like, you know, uh, Chairman uh, McLean, I do like your idea of even putting North Ave or, you know, anything else like that out there.
Well, there, there could be a question then instead of a question that requires a graphic, you know, you could use the dr- you know, addresses or, you know, certain portion.
I have a map ready to go for that area. There's, um, I, yeah, I had already started looking at. Uh, when I had started talking to Erin about some of the other components that she had looked at before. We started talking about um, mandatory mixed use. That's how I have the information. I followed up with the state. Uh, the entire area along North Ave, I believe, is less than ten acres. So even if you did the entire area from. The um, the lake all the way down to the school. On, at least just on the east side. Of North Ave, um, the right side of, nobody does north, east, west, north, south. Anyway, um. That area, I believe, is less than ten acres. So it wouldn't throw it off horribly. Um, if that was something that you felt really strongly about that area needing to stay online as mixed use, just to put it out there.
Well, as, you know, as I take the train and I'm standing there. I, I look to the right and I see the uh, Tono Building. And I look ahead to Albion Street and I see another tall building. To me, if we can put more into that kind of, just one person's opinion into that kind of setting. And, and not put it into our residential neighborhoods on any side of town. Um, you know, to me that's positive, but it's, that's just my thought process.
She want to add in North Ave too. She has a graphic.
If you have a graphic, I, I would say we add it in. I think Counselor Dombrowski, you know, brought up a good, a good point there, you know, better to. See what people think about it if we can.
Okay, I can add that. And then I'll need to add some language in and a question specific about. The mixed use component.
Well, question seven does talk about mixed use. Maybe we can expand on that question.
Sure. The graphic is going to mandatory mixed use, not just the overall concept of mixed use. Clean those questions up a little bit to make them a little more explicit in both directions.
So I don't have, I don't have comments on every question, um, but just a couple of quick ones. On number three. What is easier? Or somebody taking the survey, is it easier, and you alluded to this, Sam, is it easier to say, in what locations would you not support the high density developments? Or encircle all the areas you do not want to have the town look at into for MBTA communities? Or is it easier to say, in what locations would you support? I, I'm not sure.
This is Jen. I would suggest support. If someone reads it fast and misses the word not, they're going to interpret differently.
Yeah, because otherwise I thought, I thought we should, we would have to be kind of bold and underline not. In order to have it stand out. I think either way, but I think it has, I think as it is now, reading quickly, not might get lost in the reader's question.
Right, so we, we would change two things there. In the sentence, we change, in what locations would you, and take out the word not, and it would say you would support. And then when it says circle, select all areas that you do not want to have, you would say circle, select all areas that you do want. To have the town. So you have to take out not twice there.
Yeah, already done.
I think, I, yeah, that, that looks clean.
And the other question I had, Sam, was number four, which says, would you like to see districts. Located in all three designated areas near the train station or only one? Should we add the offsite language in there as a category? Remember, in, in number three, we now have these offsite possibilities, Salem, Audubon. And whatnot. So should we add that offsite language to number four as part of the option? I, I, once again, I'm not sure on that one either.
We could actually just remove it because I have the graphics, um. As I blended two different questions together from, again, the, the first draft I went to, um, it could be. Repetitive, uh, if you really want it in writing, I'm happy to add it. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I don't know that we need four now, because we're having them circle in three, which ones they want. So we probably don't need four, do we?
I'll defer to everyone else. Again, I'm just going to keep notes and let me know what you would like me to do.
You guys see what I'm, what I'm saying.
Counselor Vincent, you're basically saying that the answer, the, the selections in three would, ans- would answer four.
Would answer four, exactly.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable point. I mean, I think, yeah.
Hey, four's out, Sam.
Yep.
I have a couple of other points if you're interested.
We're always interested.
Okay, this is Jen, um. I, I'm just reviewing this now. So um, the question eight. I, I was unclear from the term lots of, whether it meant many or parcels of land lots. So I would just uh, clarify that whether you mean many, many smaller units or parcels of land containing. You know what I'm saying?
Right, if you just said.
Eight lots of smaller.
Or you could say just many, many.
Yeah, I'm unclear whether you mean many or part of the land.
Um, that's eight, nine and ten.
Correct. Um, just a reminder, I think.
Old seven, new eight.
Oh, I'm looking, I'm just looking at a printout. Sorry, I might not be looking.
No, there, there, it doesn't matter, because seven, eight and nine are all the same. So Jen, you're fine, um, the, on, on real, dealing with that. In reality, we can actually just take out lots of and just leave it as smaller three or four. And clean up.
Take lots of.
Um, just remember to define, so mixed use, someone might not know what that means. Someone might not know what affordable units means.
It's up on the definitions, but I'll add affordable units, because that one is.
Okay, cool. And then the last one I saw in my review is all the way at question fourteen. This might have been your plan anyway, but I would either have someone rank these or pick their top three, because I think. If you're against this, you're just going to select every single one of them and you may be interested in. What their top three concerns are or rank in importance, their top concerns.
Okay, if all of the subcommittee members would like me just to say rank top three, um, please let me know.
We were talking about question fourteen.
Fourteen, and there's ten that are delineated in there because one is other and one is none.
I'm just afraid everyone.
So I think three out of ten is good.
Yeah, top three would be fine with me too.
I guess, I think three or five would be fine.
Want to compromise on four?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we've got three votes for four. I did have a question, Samantha, thirteen B, um, requiring developers build. Uh, total affordable units, but make the affordable housing units accessible. For those that need them the most, in other words, very low income households, while a laudable, you know, idea would. Would we really be able to get the amount of units we would need to comply? I, I was just curious if that was, if that was really part of the forty eight analysis, you know, creating a new. Low income as opposed to our usual ten percent on buttered income.
Eighty percent AMI is what we use currently. They're talking about potentially doing less. Um, if, yeah. The, the way the code is written currently is that you're allowed to do up to ten percent at eighty AMI. You cannot go below that eighty AMI threshold unless you have, you meet some other criteria of having a uh, smart. Growth zoning district in existence, and so you're utilizing part of that, or if you do an economic feasibility analysis. Um, we do not have the ti- in, in reality, we likely do not have the time to undertake an economic feasibility. Analysis, um, and I don't know if we have the money to, to do that, um. I know we don't have any money from the state and to be able to do that. So. It's up to you whether or not you want to include the question, um, or we can rephrase it if that is. Something they want to have studied in the future, or if you just want to leave it as we're doing ten percent and that's. That's at eight, at eighty percent, like all the rest of ours, and then not have that question in there. It's up to you how you would like to move forward. Um, does that make sense?
Yeah, if it's gonna, if it's gonna basically be a moot point, then I'd rather focus on whether people in general are supportive of. You know, as much as we can get relative to the ten percent as opposed to, you know, the prior plan hit zero percent. All the districts had zero percent. So I'm curious as to whether the public would like us to try to get as many. And I think that means possibly larger buildings, um, that we, we, you know, does the public want us to try to maximize. The amount of ten percent that we can get. To me, that's the question. If this is something that we're not going to have anyway, then to me, it just creates the same confusion. With somebody else reading it for the first time, that it created with me, reading it the first time.
Well, I think the question is, do you want to have an affordability component? Yes or no?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the simpler we ask these questions, you know.
Yeah, that's the simple way to ask it, which is optional. So Sam, we can't go to like sixty percent AMI under this? Okay, that's.
Not unless we.
Unless you do the study. Unless you do the study, another flaw in the. Well, I think.
You have to have some kind of, what is it, 40, something else 40.
I mean, I, I would, I would say that our conclusionary zoning is smart zoning, but not under their um, guidelines, so I think it's just, is, you know, question, is affordable housing um, important to you, is it priority, is having units that are affordable, whatever that. However you phrase that, yes or no?
Simpler is better, I think, on that.
I guess, so it's not required, so is, do you want it to just say, do you want to include the 10% of the units being affordable for larger, I mean, I don't, how do you want it, do how do you want me to phrase it?
I would say, is the inclusion of affordable housing in through 3A zoning a priority? And then people wordsmith it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I would put the 10% in there though, see.
Okay. Is, is the inclusion of 10% affordable housing, 10% affordable units, affordable housing units a priority? In, in the district? I guess. You guys will come up, Jen will come up with a better way to say that, I'm sure.
I had one last question about item one where we asked if there.
So just on that, I think I'd probably take out, um, at 80% AMI, because I don't know, I don't think anyone's going to know what that means.
I agree, I take it out, no one, no one knows. I think that's good right now.
Okay, um, Samantha, is your question one a conditional question where you're asking? If someone is supportive, yes, no, if they answer no, are they continuing on with the survey?
I think they should.
Okay, I might move it to the end then, because it's a little strange that I'm saying, no, I'm not supportive. Yet I have to answer ranked by level of importance, which features are great to you? Because I told you I don't support this. So if you want that information, just to take a pulse, I'm not sure what you're going to do with the information, whether people are supportive or not. I just personally would suggest you put that at the end, you get all the information about how people feel, and then at the end, are you supportive of this? It just seems strange that you would continue asking people questions that they don't, they don't want to.
Oh, sure, I totally understand.
That make sense?
Yep, I wouldn't, I mean, I, I, we're not going to gain a lot of information from it. Um, because the people who answer this are not necessarily the people who are going to come to town meeting. But I had a lot of people request to have this in, so it is included, if you want me to move it around, others, just let me know. But I understand what your, your point is with the survey itself.
I think the other piece is that if, if we could go Sam to seven, eight and nine, I think that's where, those are now the same question, I think, you're the same structure.
Six, seven, eight, yeah.
Six, six, seven, and, um, I, I almost feel like we should say like, which type of building, comma, if any? And then I think D, I think, I think E should be, um, none of the above or something like that, because it it, I think kind of forces people to, to answer six, seven, eight, nine, and, and the, or six, seven and eight, I'm sorry. In the affirmative as if, um, they're having to select from a menu of options, but I don't know that. You know, those that answer, they don't want to see this, I don't think are going to be like wanting to choose like the.
Right, no, I totally understand what you're saying.
Mike, can I make a point? I, I hate to belabor this, and it sounds like some of our Monday meetings, we'd go back and forth on stuff. Um, if we do move question one to the end, we need something. We can't just, I, I just don't think you can stop the survey with question two.
Well, I, I have been thinking, and this is a little different than, you know, Jen's comments. I have been thinking that this would be a very short survey for some people. Because some people are simply opposed to this period. You know, they, they will not vote for it at town meeting, they didn't vote for it at the last town meeting. Regardless of whatever iteration we come up with here. And I don't see the need to put them through, you know, answering a bunch of questions that they're not interested in. You know, it's, it's the heck no, I won't go, you know, response and, and at that point. Whatever percentage of people that is, we'll look at it, we'll look at the data. It won't necessarily control everything we do, but I, I otherwise we're wordsmithing like councillor Dombrowski's, you know, wisely trying to do now, saying, on each question, we should give somebody an out. I think.
Sorry, the, the, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, the only thing I was, uh, going to say is, uh, I, I don't know. How helpful is this survey going to be? If we already know that there is a number of people that are not voting or not supportive of this in any iteration. How helpful is it going to be to have a survey with just the one question filled out and then it's thrown back to you? If, I mean, that's already information that we know, so what are additional information are you gaining? From having that.
I, I, I think that, I think if, if the overwhelming, you know, number of respondents answer, no, I don't want this, and that's that, I think that's also telling to us, I think there's value in that, I actually like, I, I think, I like the question that was dropped to the bottom, I actually like that at the beginning. You know, councillor or chairman of the claim to your point, and I kind of feel like after we can say, you know, please answer the following, you know, if you answered yes to the, or, um, yes to the above or whatever would be, no, whatever the answer is. Um, you know, please answer the, the following question, you know, the following questions below, because I agree, I don't think, I think if somebody just fundamentally does not support this. They shouldn't be put through having to answer all the questions, it doesn't make, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Like, they've, they've, they've logged their opinion by saying, I don't support this. Um, I'd hope that most people would offer more input, and, and I guess too, I mean, the thing is, there might be people who don't support it, but also want to still have a say in what the, uh, what the option is that would be presented at town meeting, so someone may not want this, but they may say, well, I don't want it, but if we're gonna have it, I'd like to see it here or there. So I don't know that if they're necessarily mutually exclusive, you know, um, so I think a way to kind of finesse it so that someone can say, I don't support this, but if it's going to go forward, this would be like my preferred, you know, option.
Right, it's, it's, it's not beyond the realm of possibility that someone would be initially opposed to it. But then they get to town meeting, and I'm not saying you would change minds, but uh, at town meeting, the plan that they would prefer to see proposed might be more like is, you know, a larger building plan or a mixed use plan. So I, I think that, you know, you could answer no, I'm not going to support it and still go on if you wish.
Exactly. Especially with, especially with foundry, for instance, you know, that would be something where someone's like, well, I don't support this fundamentally, but if we're going to have it. I think foundry is the most palatable of the options, I, I could see that some people might have that kind of, that viewpoint, and so a way that we can convey that, so someone answering, no, they don't support it, doesn't necessarily preclude them from being able to have an opinion about what a district or a district should look like, you know, nonetheless, you know, I, I, I think, but I think that, that last question towards the top, you know, uh feels like it makes a little more sense.
Plus, somebody could answer number one and say, no, I'm not supportive. And then read through this and get to question 14, and then they're prioritizing the reasons why they're against this. So they're giving us additional information, I do not support this by answering, circling no in question one, and then in question 14, they're informing us the particular reasons why they are not supportive. Which one of these are their highest priorities? What do we say, four now, four priorities out of the 10, so?
Yes, four.
And is like number one kind of creating a bit of a, um, of a perspective where, I mean, is that should, like, what's the current number one, should that be a part of this, but maybe not the second question, because it kind of connotes a special, I mean, a, a certain like, it, it, I think it kind of frames people's thinking a little more narrowly by, are you worried you're gonna lose money if we don't do this? I think it's an important question to ask, but I don't know if putting it at, at the top is necessary.
You could put both the, the first and second question, which are almost demographic related, um, they're just very basic ones, you could put both of those at the end and start it out by saying, here are different areas. Where would you support? And if they, they could literally select none of them at that point as well. Um, and have that same, be able to have that same kind of control component, for lack of a better term, of where they would potentially even consider anything at all.
So I think in that case, then what's currently number two, we should say, in what locations, comma, if any, would you support? Because it implies that they need not select one or, or multiple. I think, and I think starting out that way and then dropping what's current question number one down below to, at the end of it, after the other question you just moved, probably makes practical sense then. Because you've given the background already about individualized communities, and then you kind of start with this, and then you ultimately get people's, yeah.
So is the thought process of, uh, two subcommittee members to move number one to the end, is that where we're at here, councillor?
Is that what you still, yeah, is that what you still want to do?
I think that, that, I don't, I think it's an odd that we begin with that question, because it all, because it, it, it creates a, a concern for any, any respondent, or right from the get go, so I think it kind of I, I think it kind of taints their answers, if that makes sense. Um, but I thought the question that was moved down to the bottom, like, because the first question, I think, is, do you support MBK, you know, communities? Um, I thought that was okay to be the first question to ask.
Yeah, that, that's what I think, I think that should go back to being number one, and then somebody. Somebody has the prerogative of, of finishing there on the survey or continuing through the survey, and like I said, then they can answer 14 and give us the reasons why they're not supportive.
Understand if you, that, you will not get demographics of who is saying no. Which might not actually end up being helpful.
Oh, okay.
No, and that's conditional, and then they're gone, they're out of the survey, which means that I mean, I don't know, you might have a lot of people, at least with the paper surveys, I, I'm sure Jen could set it up online in a way that you could still have to file or fill out the demographics section, but with a paper survey, they're going to say no, and then they're, then they're going to toss it back to us. So just something to keep in mind, putting it at the front and letting somebody, I mean, obviously there could be half completed ones anyway. Um, but just something else to keep in mind.
Well, can we start with demographics?
Yeah, put that first, demographics first. So we have the profile of the respondents, and then we begin to ask the questions.
Let me catch up on my minutes, um, I mean, you can put them wherever you want, typically they're at the very end of the survey.
Well, if we're concerned about not getting them because of question number one, maybe we put them at the beginning.
So I would suggest number one be the demographics, number two be, are you supportive of the town? Being clients, which is currently 13, and then flow, having it flow from there, and I would drop the question about the funding towards the end of the survey.
Yeah, that's fine, with me.
Demographics becomes one, there, uh, 13 becomes two, and two becomes 13.
Which one is 13? 13 is going to be the, um.
So then I, I think, I think question.
Number two.
I think question three, and now it's question three should be moved to the end. That kind of feels like a lot more, that seems, seems to flow.
That's fine.
I'm comfortable with that, I'll, I'll leave it to, you know, the other two members.
Yeah, could you scroll back, back up to one and two now? Thank you. Okay, I like the flow between two and three now.
I think it works better.
Samantha, I just had one other quick one, if you can go to what number is it now? The one that says, what is your, what are your largest concerns about adding additional multifamily buildings in the area?
That's number 13.
You can go down to D, is in Delta. I would say impact on the value of your home. As opposed to impact on your home price, that's all.
Okay.
Thanks.
The pullout price too. Yeah, Sam, just the value of the home.
Value of your home, yeah. Thank you. It'll be online in paper copies.
Sam, it looks great, thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, thank you Samantha.
Yes, Samantha, excellent work.
Yep, no problem, um, if there's anything else that you any other questions that come up, um, feel free to reach out, I will start working on trying to get this together, um, and catch up with Jen tomorrow, uh, about the survey itself.
Um, Samantha, what is your timeline?
That's a question for the subcommittee.
Councillor, what is your timeline?
We just hate the timeline. For the survey?
Unlikely.
Unlikely.
It would have to be totally reformatted for paper versions and.
We can try to get it as far as we can.
I can handle reformatting, and I've done stuff, and I've put together plenty of surveys, um, in various programs, not that I'm trying to overstep anything, so I'm happy to assist in getting this together in any way I can.
Well, if you want it out in the next two weeks, you will have to, because I, I'm unavailable.
Right, so let's put the pedal to the metal tomorrow soon. The plan was to have it open until August 9th. Which was going to be three weeks from when it was launched, which was, this was going to be sometime this week. What's our, why do we need to have it done by August 9th? Is that a hard and fast date? I think we should get it as soon as we can. I do too, but are you able to do that, Sam, with Jen gone?
I will talk to her tomorrow and coordinate as much as we can. I don't have a definitive answer unfortunately, but I can work on getting the paper copies out at a very minimum relatively quickly.
It just seems like we, we want to have the responses to this before we have a public meeting, don't, don't you think?
Are you looking to?
Yeah, right, I think you want to have some, yeah, I agree.
Because I'm just, I, I just, I could know we talked about like that la, that very last week, like, not next week, the week following for a public meeting, but if the survey is still out there, I don't, I don't know, I, I'm wondering about the timing of the public meeting, given that the survey would still be open.
Would, would we possibly, Steve, be able to do a public forum? You know, a couple of them in August, put it out, out, but still be within, I don't know, we were going to do one in July, one in August. Could we do one, you know, mid-August and one towards the later, but I'm just, I'm just wondering, on our timeline, does, would that still work?
Yeah, it's still work.
Which is not to say that if, you know, we, we can't do one on the 31st and, you know.
We could do one the 31st anyway.
You could do it on the 31st anyway.
At least get, you can get.
Get people's thoughts.
People's thoughts.
Before the survey, whether the survey is out or not. Whether it's been more widely disseminated online or not. Still have that forum.
I think we have the forum anyway. My, my opinion.
Should we move to that? Let's move to item seven, uh, public forum, proposed date of July 31st, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the community room of the public safety building.
Yes, I'm moved.
So, I have a second.
Oh, a second, I'll just say, I'm, I'm not, I'm not available on that date, um, because of a work commitment, but I, but that's, it can, it can go forward, certainly, I, that's fine.
If you're okay with it, councillor, we'll, uh, run it anyway, we'll have a quarter of two.
That's fine.
Okay, any discussion on that? I'll assume it's seconded by councillor, councillor Dombrowski, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor councillor Dombrowski?
Yes.
Councillor Vincent and myself is 3-0, four of the minutes. How many people do we have online, do we know?
We had seven or eight?
Seven or eight?
That were not on the committee.
Any objection councillor to be, you know, just asking whether any, uh, public comment?
That's fine, if anybody has.
Yeah, I, I would, I would reopen public participation if any of the public have any comments based on what they've heard relative to the survey, uh, tonight. Tonight.
Counselor McLean, it's Julie Scott.
Hello, Julie.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for having this meeting tonight. You guys are all in an air-conditioned room. I have some comments about question three with the maps. And the viability, perhaps, of some of those locations. I would ask that you guys reach out to the, involve the Conservation Commission. We have so many wetlands in Wakefield in places you wouldn't expect it. The map area of Quanapawat Parkway, Audubon Road, and even Foundry Street has some, some wetlands. I had pulled up the M A C C. The Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commission's most recent information. And they said, what activities are prohibited in wetlands, riverfront areas and other resource areas? It says, under the act, no one may, quote, remove, fill, dredge or alter, unquote, any wetland floodplain, bank. Land under a body, water body, land within a hundred feet of a wetland, or land within two hundred feet of a perennial stream or river. And it goes on and on, but I do know some of those maps are are very close to wetlands. And if you could reach out to involve. Some sort of discussion with the Conservation Commission, it might help you. There might be some of those areas in those maps that might actually not be as viable as we would hope.
Yeah, to, just to answer your point, Ms. Scott, the areas are meant to be large, just to give people a general idea. Because if I make them any smaller, it's hard to get. Your, kind of your bearings as to where they are on a map. The Audubon, as well as Quanapawat, actually note, if you look at the questions. That there are a number of limitations that not all of this area would be utilized. Audubon has a very small portion that is allowed to be utilized, but. If I were to give you that map, it would make no sense. You can't really see it because it's just a portion. And that would still, both of those would still, actually, those are the two areas, yes, that have the wetlands or impact from. Natural resources and or watershed and hydro. There's a whole list of different things that are excluded for the state, which we can actually get access to, all those layers that go into G I S. This is giving you a lot of information, I I'm aware, but just letting you know, we have looked at it. And in order to hit that or try to stay close to that maximum of nine acres. You would still be able to do that in both of those areas. It would not be the entire area. So if there's a way that you feel would be helpful for that to be rephrased as such, I'm happy to hear that.
Well, I just, I thank you for that. I I do know in in two weeks' time, people will be asking, there's, there's an awful lot of wetlands on those maps. Will you be involving the Conservation Commission? And I just think the earlier they're involved, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands up to? Speak at the moment, Steve?
No, not that I see.
Uh, ready? You good?
Yeah, it's the first time. Looks fine.
If you could just identify yourself.
Sure, I'm Maria Olivera, two sixteen street. Are you going to get involved with the Wakefield item and put it in the paper, or is it just gonna be online? How is it gonna be distributed, I guess?
Samantha, could you answer the distribution questions?
I will defer to Jen. We had talked a little bit about it, but she could probably give you a few more specifics on how it was handled previously. And I.
Are we talking about the forum or the survey? So typically. I I will not be here when the survey goes out, so I'll tell you what we would typically do. We would put it out on our website as a news item. Obviously, people don't go there every day, so there's a subscription. It goes out to a few thousand people via email. We put it up on our Facebook page. We put it up as an ad on W C A T Television. They often make public service announcement videos as well. It's in the item. It's on our community calendar. And those are the general, oh, and then we have paper copies, obviously, at the library, senior center and town hall, for those who. Prefer not to do things digitally as well. So off the top of my head, those are the ways we typically communicate. Again, it's going to be challenging, because Sam is brand new here. I'll try to try to get you up this speed and get you all the contacts and make a list for you, though.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, Steve?
That's it, that's all I got.
Alrighty. In which case, it looks like we're at number eight, which is adjournment.
I have a question.
And except that Jen has a question.
I'm sorry, I came here just to ask a couple of questions about the forum, because I prepped some materials to go. So I would like to ask you, what are we calling this? I see this is three A, MBTA. The name of your group seems to be the forty A. Subcommittee. So what would you prefer that this initiative be called?
Forty eight, three A.
Generally, yeah, chapter forty, section three A.
Last time, I kept it the same. We called it MBTA three A, multifamily zoning.
We're not specifically looking at multifamily.
Okay.
On this, so.
But I just see a discrepancy between the forty A here and three A, MBTA, and I don't want anyone to be confused. So I would just like to know what you'd like to call this initiative.
I think technically, it could be, it should be chapter forty A, section three A, MBTA. I know, it's a lot to say.
I know.
But I think it's.
Or MBTA communities zoning.
MBTA community is fine, too. I I think it's.
Technically, it should, it should be.
But for marketing.
You can, you can put in that longer thing, but.
I think it's known around and things I've read refers to it as forty A, MBTA communities. I never see the three A.
Yeah, that's, yeah, because forty A is an entire statute that a lot of it, a lot of it has nothing to do with this.
Yeah, it's it's a month long. We're under three A for this particular business.
And I mean, technically, I mean, there is, it is multi, multifamily, right? Because there's no, there's no way around that, even with these. Iterations, so it really is a multi, it is a multifamily zoning.
It's multifamily, but it's also mixed use, which are technically typically two different uses that are listed in zoning regulations. And they're seen as two different uses, even though technically there's multifamily as part of mixed use, they're seen separately.
Can we leave it at MBTA communities?
That's fine. I think I I I know what, I know you're looking for something that's gonna.
I just wanted to ensure we're consistent. I don't want to confuse anybody.
I think we should add in the forty, I think we should add in the forty eight piece, because that's part of the vernacular that's been used a lot.
Am I hearing MBTA forty A?
MBTA forty A communities. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You okay with that? Thank you.
I think it's fine. I mean, I do think there is the multifamily component to it that I feel like we've used in the past, but.
You want to expand it, or do you, you okay with the shorthand of?
I think we should probably say multifamily communities, because I don't think people are gonna understand what it is otherwise, like necessarily. You know, because that, they'll, they'll connect the multifamily piece to this discussion, I think, because otherwise, MBTA communities just could be a number of things, if people aren't necessarily tuned in. If that works for you guys.
So MBTA forty. Communities, multifamily housing? Is that what?
We should do what Jen has there.
MBTA three A, multifamily zoning.
Overlay district.
Overlay district.
Should know what that is.
And and plus, if that's the way it was advertised last time, it looks the same.
Okay, so three A and not forty A.
I think what you have, yeah.
Three A, okay, thank you.
I think, I think, but I don't have a vote.
I I think forty A, I think people know it by forty, I don't think people know it by three A.
Okay.
Then we'll change it.
We'll change three eight or forty eight, Steve. Without a vote, but you're persuasive.
Persuasive, you went the other way.
All right, are are we good with you?
I think so.
You sure?
Okay for us to adjourn?
Yes, thank you.
Well, there's no matters not anticipated.
I don't even put it on.
Yeah, it was your matter.
Are you, are you gonna second the motion to adjourn?
I was second.
All right, adjournment. Do I need a roll call vote to adjourn it?
No.
All right, the meeting is adjourned at seven nineteen P M. Thank you, thank you, everyone for attending.